Long-term strategic plans that talked about recommending local generation and reinforcing local control as a municipal electric utility. Each of those kind of came to the same conclusion of owning and operating our own power for our own future. And now we talk a little bit about what we have and maybe haven't done as a city. So in March 2022, the city council directed us to negotiate with those net gas turbines and look at acquisitions. Ultimately, we got to the final step and did not move forward with the purchase of those gas turbines. December of 2022 PUAB told us to continue discussing and continue looking at options to develop generation on an ongoing basis and what kind of options we would have in front of us. 2024, city council received those DKMT studies and then held some sessions for public input and ultimately decided to own and operate this municipal electric utility moving forward. In 2024, we approved the UET Ventures Option to Lease Program that Charlie just talked about, our assistant city manager. And then in 2024, the city council voted to retain IPL and endorsed a path to reinvest in our electric utility moving forward. So utilization of private investment. So I know that there's questions out there. Well, we've decided, let's go ahead and move forward owning and operating our own electric utility. We've passed on gas turbines before. Why don't we just go back out to the market and buy some gas turbines and own and operate those? I don't think it's any secret that things in the electric utility industry are very expensive and that kind of heavy capital investment will require bonding and could ultimately lead us to put the weight on the residential ratepayers of independents. So privately financing this and us partnering up with private investment allows us to take that pressure off of the residential customer rates and lower our, I would say, our risk in the overall timeframe of that generation. So the city will retain ownership of the land. We gain future ownership flexibility. So at the end of the lease, we will have options to purchase this power plant. Private partners will fund and construct the plant. So again, we're not going out for bonds and taking that debt on as a city. We will be the, I would say, the first action or the first person to be able to say yes or no if we want to be able to purchase that power from those generation plants. And then it allows greater competition where we can compete with large-scale investor-owned utilities, which has been a challenge for us for a long time. And then the last item I have is to talk about kind of who Independence Power Partners is. So it's a makeup, kind of a trifecta of three different companies that bring decades of experience. Exigent Energy, you can read these own over 60 years of combined generation development, have 6,000 megawatts of generation completed to date and deployed over $6 billion of capital. So this is not their first rodeo in building a power plant. They've been doing it for many, many years. UET or United Energy Trading has 25 years in the natural gas trading experience. So with us looking at natural gas generation, it made sense to bring on some partners who understand the gas industry. Bringing fuel to your power plant is just as important as what turbine you pick and how you hook it up electrically. And then Rainbow Energy Marketing has 30-plus years of wholesale power trading experience. So it makes sense for us to partner with somebody who has experience on the marketing side of the Southwest Power Pool. They have over 2,000 megawatts of generation under development and 1,200 megawatts of generation under operation via affiliates. So all three of these companies have, bring decades of experience from the sides of building, constructing, owning, operating, providing fuel, and then long-term agreements with power providers. Is there any questions with any of that before I leave the podium?
Please proceed.
So Joe, just to be clear, those three companies with all that experience came together and formed Independence Power Partners.
That is correct.
And then that's who we would be dealing with in this situation.
That is correct.
Anyone else other further questions? If you could go back to the last slide, please. And I think it's bullet point number three. Private partners fund the construction of the plant, no taxpayer or ratepayer debt. So, you know, these companies are obviously going to go out to the marketplace and get bonds.
Yes.
But the question I have is, we're not in any way guaranteeing these bonds. They're taking the, the Independence Power Partners are taking the risk completely and absolutely.
That is correct. So they will go out, get the financing for this project, build and construct this project, and then give us the first opportunity to buy the power off of the project. If we decide that we don't want the power off of this project, they have strong security, they can just go to the market and be able to sell that energy outright if necessary.
Because there's such a demand in the marketplace right now that it'd be easy for them to sell it in this. And so really what you're, what I'm hearing you say is this is a really elegant solution for us as a city, is we're not taking on the risk, but yet we're having the opportunity to develop energy that in case an opportunity came along in the valley, we would have that opportunity to possibly do something there.
It gives us immediate availability to local power, locally-generated power to provide for any economic development opportunities that come our way without taking on the risk and bonding and taking out loans ourself. So yes.
So it doesn't put any risk to IPL and its balance sheet?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Anyone else other further questions? Please proceed.
Lest anybody think that this has not been a well-considered project. You've been actually working on this since 2018. Obviously, much of this is not in the public eye because it's thinking through markets and whether we'd be able to sell generation. That was some of the early questions with the first set of combustion turbines was it would have to be financed at that point by the ratepayers, which is, I think, where some of the heartburn came from up on the dais. We knew we needed it, but we just couldn't figure out how to pay for it so that the residential ratepayers weren't paying for something that would benefit corporations. And I think you found an absolutely elegant solution to that. I know you've been working, how long have you been working on this particular agreement?
When did I get here? Four, four years, plus years ago?
Four years, okay. Well, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else other further questions? Excellent, thank you.
And just to end the presentation, kind of where we're at right now and what our next steps are. So you're considering tonight Chapter 100 bonds to provide a financing mechanism in lease structure for the property turbines and equipment, which is going to be located on city property. It does allow the power partners, the Independence Power Partners, to proceed with negotiating the terms of a phased PPA, phase one being 200 megawatts, and then phase two being 600 megawatts. And it allows for IPL to meet their planning reserve margin requirements from SPP. I think one thing to note on this is IPL will have the option to purchase the plant at a future date, offering the flexibility without the risk. So your next step tonight is to consider approval of the Missouri Chapter 100 Plan as an option, not a requirement, to negotiate and generate the electrical capacity at the former Blue Valley Plant. I'm going to have David Martin come up with Gilmore Bell, the city's bond council, to go over the Chapter 100 Plan as he normally does with these.
Good evening. The item that is in front of you with respect to this hearing is the Plan for Industrial Development or Chapter 100 Plan that accomplishes what Charlie just described. And I'll give a brief overview of that plan and then take any questions with respect to it. In this circumstance, the plan itself is before council without the Chapter 100 bond issuance and accompanying documents. Those are still being negotiated and drafted and will come back at a later time, assuming the plan passes and implement those documents, put them up for approval separately. So the plan describes the acquisition, well, the city owns it, so the lease acquisition by the company of approximately 91 acres. That's the retired Blue Valley Power Station owned by the city. Currently has a $0 assessed valuation due to municipal ownership. It describes two phases that Charlie mentioned in which natural gas generating facilities will be constructed and equipped. And it describes a total investment of approximately $2 billion, of which approximately $12 million is personal property. It has three abatement components. The real property and improvements would be abated for a period of 20 years after completion of the project and during the construction period. So it ends up being about 22, maybe 23 years, depending on the length of the construction period to completion of the first phase. And that is 100% abatement of real property taxes during that period. Additionally, there will be a 100% abatement under the plan with respect to the personal property, and that is what we refer to as a rolling abatement, which means it starts for each item of personal property on the date that it is implemented at the site and runs from 20 years after that period. So then the property will roll off of the abatement and be replaced by other property. Additionally, the plan describes sales tax exemption on construction materials, which has become a common addition to abatement transactions in Missouri. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the plan.
Any questions? Please proceed.
I'm just going to reiterate the thing that we say up here all the time. Chapter 100 bond does not obligate the city to pay anything back, and we would not incur any ownership in this arrangement.
So...
Other than we own the land.
Right, so it will be within municipal ownership by the city for the duration of the abatement, and that's required by state law as a way to affect Chapter 100 abatement. There are protections for the city as being the owner, since it will be operated by a private company. So the lease will have built-in protections in the way of an indemnity requiring the company to cover any losses sustained by the city by virtue of its ownership, and then will also require insurance to be covered in order to cover the sovereign immunity waiver limits that the city might be subject to liability on the property. With respect to the bonds, you're absolutely right. Chapter 100 bonds and what we refer to as a buy-your-own structure, where the company actually purchases the bonds, they do not involve any liability by the city for payments in the way of debt service to be made on the bonds. So the ultimate financing will be procured by the company from private sources and will not flow through the bonds.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions from anyone else? This is a weird question. Is there any limit to how much a city can issue in regards to Chapter 100 bonds?
No, there's not a Chapter 100 upper issuance limit.
I mean, as long as it, as long as the market will buy them, let the market bear the risk then?
So again, on this type of a bond issuance, the company that's investing in the project, so Independence Power Partners, will itself purchase those bonds.
Right.
So they are both the obligor to make the bond payments under the lease and the obligee of those payments. So there's no risk of a debt service shortfall, and it's not the market that's taking on the risk because the market isn't purchasing the bonds.
Okay, very good. Okay, excellent. I appreciate that. Anyone else further discussion? Okay, this is the fun part. It is a full, unless you have anything else, Charlie? This is a full public hearing, so we all know that everyone in here has an opportunity to share if they would like. So I will call it three times if anyone would like to come forward and talk about the Chapter 100 bonds. You'd certainly have the opportunity to, so I'll open the public hearing, and you'd have the opportunity to come forward and talk about it. So you can talk in favor of, opposition, or information purposes only. And please state your name and address, please.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057, in favor of. It was interesting because at the October 16th PUAB meeting, our IPL director said, as this board has come to understand, we cannot do without capacity. Now, he was talking about the repair of IPL turbine J2, but the message applies here tonight as well. This power generation project shows the importance of, the important role that IPL plays to this community. IPL can't generate the energy needed for future projects to come forward. And as council member mentioned, we did not want to incur bonds that could jeopardize and raise our rates. So this is a plausible solution to help with our financial growth and keep our rates low as well. The Sawville, Burns &amp; Mack, and DNKT studies all said the same thing. IPL needs to generate to bring in large users to keep our rates low. So no more analysis paralysis. I truly welcome this additional generation project. Your approval is the first step in moving independents forward. And I'd like to remind you too, that recently, within the last year, Evergi has announced that they are building, I believe it's two large gas-powered energy units and our plants. We are falling further and further behind. This project may not be an easy ticket out, but it certainly is a very good solution in keeping us running forward with moving what we want in our goals, economic development within the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or just for information purposes only? And please state your name and your address, please.
Kevin Baird, 2312 Viking Drive. My comments tonight are my own and do not reflect those of my employer. Tonight, the city is starting the approval process for a massive new methane generation plant within our city limits. The city calls it economic development. I call it a sweetheart deal for big corporations and a raw deal for the families of independents. The developers get the profits, the gas traders get the fees, and the people sitting in this room, we get the pollution, we get the volatility, and we get the risk. But before we even get to the money, let's look at how the game is played. The city can say they've been working on this for years, but this deal was built in the dark. There were no town halls, no community workshops, there was virtually no effort to educate the people of independents about the most significant energy project in IPL's history. The city's paid consultants last year told them plainly, do an integrated resource plan first. They said, plan before you buy. But the city has skipped the planning and jumped straight to the deal. And worse, the city is racing to lock this in, just months before voters go to the polls in April to decide on a charter amendment to create a new independent utility board. That board is supposed to be the one making these generational decisions. By rushing this process and treating this massive decision like a routine agenda item, the city is telling every voter in independents that their voice doesn't matter. The city is strapping a 30-year anchor to that new board before it even exists. That isn't leadership, that is a betrayal of the public trust. The city claims this project brings reliability, but we do not have short memories. We all remember Winter Storm Yuri in February 2021. We remember sitting in the dark and the freezing cold while SPP mandated rolling blackouts. And the costs from that storm, they exploded as gas prices skyrocketed. IPL burned through $57 million in just one month, and we paid for it through the fuel fee on our bills. This plan straps every ratepayer to that same volatile market for 30 years. Experts forecast gas prices will surge 50% in the next two years alone. And we have a rule in our rates, Schedule FA-1, that passes those fuel costs straight on to us. When gas prices spike in Texas, our bills spike here. And here's the wildest part. We are already living this nightmare. Why are our rates so high today? Because we are stuck paying off debt for legacy coal plants that are expensive to run and dragging down our balance sheet. Those old contracts are an anchor around our necks today. So why on earth would the city vote to swap a coal anchor for a gas anchor? By signing a power purchase agreement with this developer, the city is tethering us to the next stranded asset. The developer secures a guaranteed revenue stream for decades, but the ratepayers, we are contractually forced to pay the bill, even if that power becomes obsolete or too expensive to use. And while we take all the risk, let's look at what the developer gets. The city is offering a 100% property tax holiday for 20 years. Usually developers pay a pilot fee to make the city whole, but this plan says explicitly, no payments in lieu of taxes will be required. And it gets worse. Because of exemptions on construction materials, the city is agreeing to lose over $32 million in sales tax upfront. Remember that the next time they say there's no money for this or that. Finally, let's talk about what is right and wrong. It is shameful that in 2025, the city is even discussing building 15 new sources of pollution right here in our city, with four times as much expected to come online if they land their data center. And just down the street from Spring Branch Elementary School. The city is asking us to fill our neighborhoods with dirty air just to make a quick buck for a developer. And we can talk about where Evergi is, what Evergi is doing, but they're not building that in a city. They're not building that in Blue Springs or Lee Summit. If this council passes this ordinance in a few weeks, it will be endorsing a secret process, a tax giveaway, volatile bills, and throwing more methane onto the climate fire. This plan fails on the math, it fails on the process, and it fails on our values. I hope they'll use the time between now and the final vote to do the right thing. Please reconsider this deal.
Thank you. Anyone else, pardon me, anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? And please state your name and address, please.
Kelly Cannon, 17111 East 31st Terrace South. I really didn't plan on speaking about this issue, but I've read about private equity, buying power plants, and the rates going through the roof. And as far as private equity buying things up, they bought up Joanne, they bought up a lot of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and other stores around this town, and now they're defunct, they're gone. Because the debt was put on the companies while the private equity raped profitable businesses, and those businesses are no longer here to pay taxes, to offer employment, to make a city function. Because private equity came in. Now, whoever these gentlemen are, I'm not up here to say derogatory things about them. I'm just saying what I've read recently about private equity coming in, purchasing, buying, taking over, and then the people who need those services pay through the notes. Now, can we get a guarantee that our rates aren't going to go up? I don't know. But I would be skeptical about this deal just from what little I've learned tonight. But I'll be reading more about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to come forward to speak on this issue?
I have a number of concerns.
Please state your name and address.
Cody Atkinson, 722 West Waldo Avenue. Number of concerns that I'm happy to share on a one-to-one basis, but I do have a concern that it does not appear that labor has been involved in these negotiations. We have yet to see any sort of outreach on who is going to be part of building this power plant. We are presumably going to move forward on a sales tax abatement. I want to make sure that we are also not having folks come in from out of state and building this. I want to make sure that any movement on this involves our labor here and that prosperity that hopefully happens is shared in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-107, first reading, an ordinance approving a plan for industrial development for a power generation project located at 21500 East Truman Road, Independence, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. And this brings us to ordinances and brings us to 25103. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-103, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 7755 and ordinance number 18924 concerning membership criteria for the Independence Square Advisory Board, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25103?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Madam City Manager, can you give us an synopsis of why we're doing this?
This board has had trouble having quorum for meetings and filling seats. It's currently scheduled to have nine members, and its active members total six. So again, this recommendation moves it from nine to seven. So there would still be a vacancy to fill, but it would allow for meetings to actually take place for a quorum.
And how does this particular board get their members appointed?
Council appointees.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else on 25103, please? Seeing no further discussion, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Willen?
Yes. 25103 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to 25104. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-104, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant for $1,993 from Eileen Normail Weir, sorry, Community Impact Grant for the Parks and Recreation Department, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Well, I think this is fantastic, we're getting this grant, so thank you very much for that. And interim city clerk, could you please just, or city manager, please just give us a brief update on how this came about and how it will help us?
I will.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I should have given you a heads up on this. Or we could ask our former mayor to come forward and...
Oh, no. I mean, she, of course, is welcome too as the one providing the grant, but...
Sure.
No, this provides dog water fountains at Santa Fe Park.
Very good.
With these ones, so very much appreciated.
That's excellent. And I know the former mayor is a big fan of animals and has helped a lot with the shelter and done a lot of work in that regard, so thank you very much for the work on this. Anyone else further discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Willen?
Yes. 250, excuse me, 25104 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25105. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-105, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring utility easements for the Cracker Net Creek Bank Stabilization Project. Project number 302202, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25105? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, could you just speak to why we are investing these dollars, what the benefit is to the city?
Absolutely. So our string bank stabilization projects, we do when we have infrastructure that is at risk. So in this instance, we have sanitary sewer lines that are risking exposure above grade if the bank isn't stabilized. So this uses sanitary sewer fund dollars to go in and do that stabilization so that our infrastructure is maintained.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on 25105? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Willen?
Yes. 25105 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, that brings us to 25106. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-106, second reading, an ordinance amending Article 6 of Chapter 8 and Article 4 of Chapter 20 in the Independent City Code pertaining to the adoption of a revised procurement policy. Second reading.
Thank you. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I'm going to vote in favor of the procurement policy because it updates a lot of things that we need to have tidied up, but I would also like for this to get referred to audit and finance. I'm just asking because we're seeing inflationary pressures all over the place. I just want to be sure that our procurement policy escalates with inflation so that it doesn't have to keep coming back, and instead we're thinking about how those dollar amounts increase over time. And if that's appropriate based on the recommendation of audit and finance. So that would be my recommendation, independent of today's vote.
Anyone else have other questions? Also in here, and I think I remember this, and Mr. Kovar might bring this to my attention, it talks about the limits of the city manager and what they can spend, and... Can you go back into the limits of this document and bring it up? I don't have it in front of me.
That's not what's being revised in this iteration. This is, this ordinance before you this evening is simply to align purchasing policy with the ordinance. We have this duplicative language in both of those places, and over the summer, we updated the policy, but the ordinance wasn't updated, so this is just aligning those two documents. I believe Councilwoman McCandless's request would include the limits and things like that, and that's the request to take to audit and finance, if I'm understanding correctly.
So, my question is somewhat accurate, is that bringing those, because we changed the limit to $100,000 for the city manager for procurement limits.
Yes.
A few months ago.
Yes.
And this would bring the policy back into, bring these two documents into agreement?
Correct.
Yes, that's exactly what this does. This doesn't make, this, what you're doing now just reconciles these two documents so that they match, which was the intent all along. You're not making any additional changes than what you already made back over the summer.
Okay.
So, this is just, purely just a reconciliation.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clarification. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else have other further questions?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, so the council would like the Audit and Finance Committee, and I just want to make sure, because I'm chair of that committee, I want to make sure I'm doing what you want to done, is to review the procurement policy as a total for potential ability to escalate based on inflation or some reasonable factor to be determined.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Be happy to look at that.
Anyone else on discussion on 25-106? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-106 passes, six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-108, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the state of Missouri through a recipient award from the Department of Health and Senior Services, which allocates $60,059.80 to the City of Independence, Missouri for a maternal-child health program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19682. First reading. 25-109, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the state of Missouri through a recipient award from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which allocates $15,500 to the City of Independence, Missouri for a childcare health consultation program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19682. First reading. 25-110, first reading, an ordinance authorizing council action to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division at Jefferson City, Missouri, for participation in the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program during fiscal year 2025-2026 and subsequent years through September 30th, 2028, and declaring an emergency. First reading. 25-111, first reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to sign and execute for and on behalf of the city, a certain real estate purchase contract for the purchase of a certain tract of land commonly known as 18414 East Bunshu Road, for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Bunshu Regional Detention Basin, project number 132501, for the sum of $10,580, and to execute all documents, disperse funds, and do all things necessary to consummate said purchase. First reading. 25-112, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-30/PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development to District R-6 Family, Single Family Residential, and District R-6 PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development for the properties located north of Farmer Street, south of Nettleton Avenue, east of Spring Street, and west of Main Street. First reading. 25-113, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-2 General Commercial and District C-1 Neighborhood Commercial to District R-6 Single Family Residential and R-6/PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development for the properties along Dodger Avenue, north of College Street, in Independence, Missouri. First reading. 25-114, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R-12 Two Family Residential for the property located at 1116 South Woodland Avenue and 1506 West 23rd Street South. First reading. 25-115, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 711 North Arapahoe Street, in Independence, Missouri. First reading. 25-116, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a light equipment sales business at 1112 Dickinson Road, in Independence, Missouri. First reading.
Thank you. And Madam interim city manager, I think we need to go back to item number three. Is that correct? That's an emergency, and we need to take action on that tonight.
Please do.
Okay. So, we need to do a second reading on item number three. So, Mr. Kovar, all we have to do is read that again and then take action on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please proceed on 25-110, please.
25-110, second reading, an ordinance authorizing council action to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division at Jefferson City, Missouri, for participation in the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program during fiscal year 2025-2026 and subsequent years through September 30th, 2028, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I would like to add that as an emergency item, it does require supermajority in order to pass, so that would be five votes instead of four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on 25-110?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just to clarify, what makes this an emergency?
Please proceed.
This is a timing issue for when the contract needs to be signed to be eligible for future li-heep dollars. The existing contract expired on September 30th, and you only have so long for a grace period.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion on 25-110? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, but do keep in mind it needs five votes in the affirmative for this to pass. Please proceed.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-110 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. And this will bring us then to councilmember comments. And councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting here, and today in particular was pretty much a full day of meetings from early this morning to right up to now. So, and I know we have a number of things coming up for the holidays, so I want to just lift up one thing that we spent three hours on this afternoon, and that's the upcoming Parks Master Plan. That's a coming forward, will come forward to, for public presentation in January, and we made good progress, I think, on that today with the Parks Commission, and so that was, those were good meetings, but I just want to mention that more will be coming, and I think hopefully some good things will come out of that Parks Master Plan. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing today. Saturday, the animal shelter had an event from 10:00 to 6:00. They had food trucks and some entertainment. Their goal was to adopt out 50 animals. At the end of the day, they ended up adopting 39, which is a massive amount. It's basically about what we adopt out in three weeks. We got it done in one day. So, last week, the shelter adopted out 50 animals, which is about half of the population in the shelter. So, I'm just thanking the staff and Best Friends Animal Society for helping with the event. I'm very happy to say that the shelter was the quietest I had ever heard it, and that the staff is going to be able to focus on some enrichment for the animals and take them on more walks. So, it was a good day at the shelter. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, we were fortunate to welcome Lieutenant Governor Wassinger and Senator Nicola, and they had a discussion about aging exploitation and aging support services. We're lucky that they're choosing our town as a place to hold those community forums and discussions. We'll hope they'll come back and do more of those. I was lucky to be invited to the Federal Reserve. I went to their Kansas City Economic Outlook. The room was full of economists and business leaders talking about what economic changes we can anticipate in the next couple of years in this area. Obviously, population changes are going to impact both Kansas and Missouri. There are some tech issues that you might be paying attention to that will have some impact on lots of aspects of our lives. But the one thing that every speaker talked about was those who create electrical capacities, those communities are going to do the best because they're going to be able to determine their own future. So, I was encouraged to hear that discussion from the Federal Reserve. And then the last item I have is about the city manager search. You're probably sick of hearing about this, but I just want to keep bringing those milestones to you. Billy Owens, who is our representative from SGR, will be in town tomorrow. He'll be meeting individually with the council members to get their input. We'll be able to meet with groups of staff to get their input. And then we have two community focus groups who will be able to spend some time with him. This, these focus groups represent business community, nonprofits, the faith community. It has a diversity of age and ethnicity, and it has representatives from all four districts. So, we felt like we put together good opportunities for him to hear from the community. Now, during those forums, council won't be present, staff won't be present, it'll just be an opportunity for him to have a conversation from these pieces, then that will help inform the city manager job description and help us build our timeline. I will continue to come back with updates so that you know how things are moving along. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good time of year, favorite time of year, going into Thanksgiving and then to Christmas, which means fun stuff up on the square. Square lighting ceremony is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Music starts from the Music Arts Institute. Kids start at 5:30. It's going to be a good time. December 5th is going to be the Living Windows. That's from 6:00 to 8:00. Music starts at 5:30, and I believe the lights and everything go on at 6:30. It's a fun time. I can't wait to have it. Hopefully, the weather's going to hold off decently. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And I just want to give a shout out to the high school ROTC, who put a Veterans Day parade on here last Saturday, and they had a great turnout, and there were a lot of folks from the community that came and saw the parade, and they just do a great job every year, and it was an idea that the high school ROTC brought to place three years ago, and they continue to do it, and they're already planning for next year, so that is terrific, and wanted to give them a shout out. So, with that being said, Madam interim city manager, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
That is very easy. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.